Take their seats so we can start the meeting.
Running back to get 1.05 more points for me to make my plans.
I like the copper on your bike helmet.
Running back. I'm like down at the very bottom and this guy is like very top layer. It's a huge win for me.
So you're gonna beat Mike obviously?
No. Oh, come on.
I'm excited for it. I'm kind of excited to see if mine matches up with.
Right. Like the call to order, the committee of the whole meeting for November 4th, 2024. First item on our agenda is roll call.
Beraza? Lancy? Beck? Peiper?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Euer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger? Second call Beck. She's absent. Twelve present, two absent.
She'll be back.
She'll be back. See what I did there? Speak direct. We don't have to worry about speaking directly in the microphone.
Yeah. Give me one second. I'm trying to load the meeting. Okay. Second thing is remember to speak directly in the microphone. Make sure your little green lights up on there. They're up there. And Alderbein Beck has decided to join us. Item three is items to be removed, edited, or changed. Is there anything?
Uh-uh.
All right. Then we will go to matters from the public for items not on the agenda, seeing no public. I think we'll go right into item number five, discussion of the 2025 budget. The floor is yours, Peggy.
Well, I was just going to-
You want to start off?
Sure. I just wanted to start us off. So this year's budget looks very similar to where we were at with last year's budget. Where we project it will end the year this year is that we are about $500,000 ahead of where we had projected our revenues to be. And then also our expenditures are about $1.4 million less. And I think, you know, when we take a look at how we plan our expenditures for the year, it's, I'll just say, you know, the best laid plans. And then sometimes life interferes with that. I think one of the major disruptions that pulled a lot of people in this year was our response to the Flint Group chemical release. You know, I can't really point to specific, you know, projects that led to that, you know, what didn't get done. But at the end of the day, it looks like we are only going to have used $500,000 of our revenue, of our reserves versus the $2.3 million that we thought that we were going to tap into. However, a major portion of the shortfall that we were experiencing was because of investments that we're making in continuing expenditures. And we don't want to fund continuing expenditures with our reserves. That's the wrong way to do it. But I do think, as I said in my transmittal letter to you, that I think we're experiencing a little bit of a gap. We have had growth. We've had a number of, you know, we're even seeing national franchises come to the Randall Road corridor that we haven't had before and that we have not yet realized the full revenue impact from. We also have had some more rooftops, but many more are planned to be coming online in the coming years. But I think that what would be the responsible thing to do in this case is to fund that shortfall with a combination of a modest increase to the tax rate as well as utilizing a portion of the reserves. We are at about double our policy in terms of our reserves, and I don't think that's a bad place to be. I don't think that that puts us in a position of having, you know, just because it's double the policy, you have to look at the time in which we're living right now and realize that both the federal government and the state government have forecasted that some of the funding that we have had available to us in the recent several years is no longer going to be available. And so that gives us good reason to make sure that we have sufficient reserves to still be able to do the things that we want to do. There are things that have been put into our strategic action plan that we're making good progress on. And I don't think that we want to, you know, pull back from being able to accomplish the objectives that we set forth in that plan so that we can make sure that in four years from now, since we're about a year into our five-year plan, that we're going to be able to accomplish those objectives that we committed to. So what we're recommending in this year's budget is increasing our rate from 72.9 cents on $100 to 79.9, which still puts us, you know, at a very competitive rate to neighboring communities. And I think we've spoken about this over the last several years, that in light of where we have committed to going, that we knew that it would be difficult even to keep up with the way costs are increasing for everything, period, just to keep up. But if we want to make those investments in the things that we need to do to get to the places where we have planned in our strategic plan, then I think that this is a wise investment. I also want to point out that the budget, there were seven positions identified as needed that are not part of this budget. And the reason being that when you take a look at our general fund budget, almost 70% of the expenditures there are salaries and benefits related. And I think that that's an area where we want to be very careful in adding personnel because we don't want to put ourselves in a position ever of having to cut back on the personnel that we have. And so then we just want to be very careful and measured in how we grow our staff. So in this year's budget, we have one firefighter, one police officer. Nope, we took the police officer out. I'm sorry about that. And then we have the-
Assistant.
Engineering assistant for the electric department, which means that we added the other half position back into the engineering department. So those are the only-
And the assistant public works director.
And the assistant public works director, which had previously been approved. But, you know, the positions that we have put on hold in the current budget were two firefighters, two police officers, public safety management analyst, and HR management analyst. And then also, we had approved earlier this year an additional IT position, which still remains vacant at this time. We thought we had identified a candidate for that position, but it happened to fall through. We think it's best at this time to just put the hiring for that position on hold, maybe until later in 2025. We would still have to do a budget amendment in order to add that back into the budget. But we think it would be wise to put that on hold at this time. Doing so allows us to make strategic investments significantly in the area of IT. It allows us to fulfill our commitments to Main Street, to increase their funding, and also BATV. And so doing so will allow us to do a lot of important things that get us closer to our goals in our strategic plan.
Well, thank you, Laura. That's it. No, I know everybody must be very tired after the time change, so I'm not going to drag this out or go through everything step by step. The budget software is laid out very nicely where you can go through and see everything. I don't know how many of you have had a chance to look at it yet. Hopefully, you've had a little bit of a chance. I know there wasn't that much time for you to go through it in detail. The main thing that I would ask that you look at this week is consideration of the property tax increase because it has to be published in the paper next Friday, not this coming Friday, but the following week, and they need to have that to them by Wednesday morning. So after next week's COW, we'll have to have a decision on what that amount will be. So for those that are watching online, you can find our budget. The link is on our front page or through the finance page. As Laura mentioned, her transmittal is in the introduction. Please do read her letter. And other items in the introductory section that you might find of interest are our fund structure because that tells you how all of the funds are connected and it'll help you understand how we do the budget and where the departments report to. The other item here is our, whoops, not basis of budgeting, although that's interesting. The budget process has our calendar on it so that you can see what the tentative timeline is for our meetings and what we will need to have done and by when. Something that was added since this was sent out, I just added it today. Max sent it to me Friday night, but I was out of town and couldn't add it. But he did a very nice summary on the strategic plan. So please do look at this section. It's under the budget overview tab. The budget overview tab just gives you an outline of the total budget, 164.1 million, and then goes over some of the highlights of the general fund because that's our main day-to-day one that's supported by taxes. The other, the utility funds are supported by rates. Still important that we look at the budget because we don't want the rates to be higher than they should be. But the general fund is usually the one that we focus on during the budget meeting. And then in the overview here, what Laura was talking about, our days of operation. This just refers to if something happened and you didn't have your revenues coming in, how many days could you keep providing services to your residents and businesses? And the electric utility looks a little scary because it should be 90 days, but they have a very aggressive capital plan that probably is not going to hit the level they have. And we do have a study that will be done early next year, and they will be making some recommendations, and that will come back to you at that time. This also includes some pretty significant increases to purchase power and electric. We've had very, very low costs for our capacity costs for electric this year, and it's predicted that that's not going to last. So we had to budget a little bit higher for that. So in navigating here, we have fund summaries. Whenever you see a little carrot, that means there's more information. So we have the all funds, general fund, going over our revenues and expenses. The other funds that we have here are motor fuel tax, our debt, which refers to general fund debt, our capital project fund, which has all of our general fund capital, drainage, street, buildings, public works, and fire. TIF funds, we have a TIF expiring next year. This will be the last year for TIF number one, 2025. So it has some spending there to spend down that increment and get some projects done. If we get to the end of the year and there is surplus because we didn't finish some of those projects or they came in less, that will be distributed to all of the taxing bodies. And then the enterprise funds are the utilities. So we have the summaries here, and internal service funds are health insurance and workers' compensation. Under the funding sources, I go over our sales tax. We have unfortunately lost a taxpayer. I can't name the business. You probably wouldn't even realize that we were getting sales tax from this particular entity, but it's a decrease of about 600,000 a year. So it was significant. So that is one of the reasons why our sales tax is a little bit lower than what was budgeted in '24 and what the actual amount was in '23. And then we have information on the property taxes. This is a truth in taxation notice as it would be if you were to approve what we have in the budget. We have a significant amount of growth in our EAV, so that allows us to capture 1.1 million without increasing the rate. But that still was not enough to cover general fund expenditures. So we added 1 million that would actually increase the rate, as Laura mentioned, to from about 73 cents to 79 cents. And for the owner of a $300,000 home, that would be about $67 a year or $5.60 a month. And I think I put that, oh, I didn't, but I put a history of our rates here, and I included what the projected amount would be. So you can see there was a really big jump in our projected EAV, and I expect that it's going to continue to grow as we have Ashton Ridge and Windmill, what is it, Windmill Landings? Whining Creek. I don't know why I'm thinking Windmill Landings. Okay, Whining Creek. I knew that. And then over here, we have departments. All of the general fund departments are listed here with all of the budgets. I would recommend that you read, definitely look at IT because that's had some changes. Community and economic development has some items in there that you would be probably interested in looking at. Then we have, as Laura mentioned, and I think you've already heard and approved of, the assistant public works director. So that is included in the public works budget here. We have one engineering assistant that's split between the general fund and the electric utility, and this budget recommends adding a position which would increase half a position in electric and half in the general fund. You may notice an increase in streets and walks, but that is because there was some shift from public properties over to streets and walks. So they kind of cancel each other out. Police and fire. As Laura mentioned, the police department had asked for two police officers and fire asked for three firefighters. And based on where the projections are for the budget, we ended up only recommending at this time one firefighter. Oh, and also there was a public safety management analyst that was not included. Otherwise, no big changes to any of the programs. And then all three of the utilities are here. Then we have our capital improvements plan. You can look at all of the capital projects that we have. If you click on there, you can get more information. Some are more wordy than others. But we also have then the full capital improvements plan to 2029. You wouldn't be approving all of these. It would just be those that are included in the 2025 budget. But as you can see, we have a significant, significant amount of capital projects planned out through 2029. And then this last tab over here is our current amount of outstanding debt. Our general fund does not have that much debt really, considering a city of our size. That's very good. Unfortunately, our sewer utility is going to have a significant amount of debt, and this is before phase 2B, which is going to be 72 million. So, and that's not in this projection. Those numbers could change, I'm assuming, even more so at that point. So we do have sewer rates that are going to be increasing every year for a long time, unfortunately. Yes. And the water utility has some debt rolling off, but they'll be taking on new debt. This includes the plan to finish out the lead service line replacements. That will only happen if we are approved for the funding through the IPA. We'll do whatever amount that they approve for the loan, zero interest, so we're trying to get it off.
And there is the possibility in the low to moderate income areas that part of those loans will be forgivable, but it's just a possibility at this time.
Yeah, and we'll definitely try and apply that way. So that is the budget as we have it right now. Have any of you had a chance to review it or have questions on it? I can certainly go into more detail, but I don't want to keep anybody here longer than necessary.
I have a general question.
Yes.
Can you just briefly summarize again the reserve policy?
Yes.
It's in days, correct?
Yes.
And where are we versus our-
So our policy just has the general recommendation for the minimum and-
Which is 90?
It's 60 for the, for general fund, but all cities in this area have, have more than 60 days by far. And then the utilities are 90. And generally, you have more than that in a utility because you have a lot of infrastructure that you are going to pay for that you're saving for. So although it may be 247 now, we're going to be taking on debt that we need to start repaying with the reserves from the utilities. So the general fund, very healthy reserves, but the concern is you don't want to be paying for, you know, hiring people and then use all the reserves with no source of revenue to pay for ongoing costs. Reserves should generally be used for, if you know you're going to fill that gap, capital projects. We know that there are some capital projects that are on the horizon that we could use some of that money for. 2027, we're going to have 27 payrolls, so we'll have an extra payroll is 1.1 million, so we'll use it for the extra payroll in 2027. But on my way here tonight, I heard the song, "Save it for a rainy day." And I thought, are we saving too much? Are we saving enough? It's always a judgment call. We're lucky that we are able to have that much in reserves and not have to worry on how we would fill that gap.
Your honor?
Yeah, I don't know how, maybe Allen was here, but when we tore down and rebuilt the Wilson Street Bridge, do you remember that scenario?
Yes.
We got very fortunate in that one because that was projected to be a 20-year bond that we were going to have to issue. And at the end of the day, I don't know if we issued, did we issue any bond?
We did. Actually, I'm glad you brought that up because I forgot to mention- Actually, I'm glad you brought that up because I forgot to mention it when I was on the debt tab. We borrowed 2.5 million, but the cost was about 15 million at that time.
17.8.
It was 17.8? Okay. So we only had to borrow 2.5. And we paid our last debt payment on that.
And then the other thing that happened was we became a home rule community and we could go to a referendum and ask for more sales tax. And we did that with the idea that we were going to use that money to tear down the existing two fire stations that we had, which were very inferior structures, and replace them with quality buildings, which we were able to do. And I think we've been able to use that 2% sales tax to pay the bonds on those all these years, have we not?
We have.
That comes off soon though, right?
It comes off very soon, this year. So this budget includes the last payment that we'll make for the fire stations on January 1st of 2026. So those bonds will be paid off and that will free up 780,000 or so in sales tax that we can use for funding some of this gap that we have between revenues and expenditures.
Remember when we did that and we specifically put in with the referendum that that money would also continue to be collected after we paid the bonds off, but use it for infrastructure? We, I think that's, I don't know if it was just infrastructure or transportation.
At the time, we had to declare that because it was a non-home rule sales tax. Since then, we became home rules, so we didn't have to do the segregation and declare it for infrastructure. But we, we are way beyond that in what we fund our infrastructure because the interfund transfers, we have 3.5 million in capital transfers that we are included in this budget that are going to fund street improvements, building improvements, and drainage improvements. Since that time, we've really put in, to place a good stormwater management program. We had not really been doing much in that area and thanks to our public works department, we've really made great strides in that area. Hopefully, no flooding tonight in, in the streets because of leaves.
Try to see what it looked like over there first before it gets it raining.
Can I just make one other?
Sure.
Piece of history here. There was one person that was very instrumental in Batavia getting that bridge grant. And he was the Speaker of the House of the US Congress, J. Dennis Hastert. And he, he called me over to the office one time when this was all going on. And he says, "I think we should give you more money so that you can put a walk underneath the bridge on both sides of the river and that you can put some lights underneath of it." And then he wanted to have the walk go all the way up to where the new bike bridge is. And I think he may have even given us some money for the help or share of that bike bridge. I mean, he really, and I think everybody knows here, he kind of left Congress in a very disgraceful moment, but boy, did he do Batavia some, some good.
Yes.
And then the other one that is more recent that we've gotten is, she's no longer our Congressman, but Congresswoman Underwood got us, I believe, $3 million to buy a new building for the Coles Closet and the food pantry. And that's now being done out on?
First Street. First Street.
First Street. And we were able to pay for the whole building with what you got and then have money left over to do improvements inside the building.
That's right. We, we have a $3 million grant and the building was 2 million, so there is 1 million in this budget to complete the interior improvements that are needed.
I just wanted to stress that, you know, I'm talking here and some of the folks I've talked about were Republicans and some were Democrats. And Batavia's always been, thank goodness, the city council's never been rough and rod about being a hardcore Democrat or hardcore Republican. We all keep our mouths shut, vote for who we want, but we don't get involved in that. And that's, that's really helped us quite a bit. And the fact that we've been able to get all this federal money into Batavia, there's a little strategy behind that that's got there. And I commend Alderman Wolf because he's been a voice in this since the very beginning when we started it. And it was a real delicate mix, but we got it all done.
Doesn't matter who we have to deal with as long as they can deliver.
Yeah.
And, and that's why you have to keep those chains open, those lines of communication open, so that way, you know, you, you make sure whoever it is there, doesn't matter what party they are, as long as you can work with them and it's for what you need for your citizens, that's what you have to do.
And the other thing that helped Batavia a little bit, specifically on the bridge, for Hastert to go to Congress and get this big wad of money was that Wilson Street was one of the entrances into Fermi National Accelerator Laboratory. And that helped us quite a bit to sweeten it up as far as how much money they wanted to give us because this was ways, a lot of the people who worked there in construction traffic and whatever have you could go to Fermi Lab. So that's another benefit to Fermi Lab that a lot of people don't talk about the benefits to Fermi Lab, but Fermi Lab has been very beneficial to the community of Batavia by what it does, how it runs itself, and how our, you know, the low profile it maintains. It really doesn't cause a whole bunch of people want to go out there and protest at the front door and scream and howr and whatever have you. It's, it's been a great neighbor. So.
One question, you know, just thinking ahead a little bit, we've got a year left on the grocery tax in the state of Illinois.
Read my mind after he was talking and I'm like, I'm going to bring that up.
Where's that going?
So how much were you projecting for revenue for that for this year that won't be here next year?
About 1.2 million. So it's significant. It's frustrating because the governor is taking credit for eliminating it, but that was easy for him to do because it didn't take any money from the state budget. It took it away from all of the local governments that receive it.
They did was administer it and bring it, give it back to us.
He's going to take it away, but if any of us wanted to bring it back, we could without it, just a vote of the city government.
Right. So he is allowing non-home rule communities to implement the tax without going to referendum. We don't need that. We can do it on our own. And we're going to be recommending that we do implement it because it's a significant amount of, of revenue and people won't notice it because they're already paying it.
Do we know if any of the other cities around us have?
Not yet.
Thought about it, talked about it, yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm sure they're thinking about it. I'm sure they're all thinking about it because.
But I mean, that's something that I think maybe we need to, as Alderman, we may need to talk to our counterparts on the cities around us because if we're going to do it, we're going to need people around us to do it or it's going to be an issue. Because people will talk about it. It's, it's a little percentage and like you say, might not notice it, but people will talk about it.
Yes.
Yeah, things are more expensive in Batavia because they got higher tax.
Yep.
So I'm thinking a little bit more long-term as we're talking about this year's budget and funding sources. And I know we've approved a couple of studies this year, like the Community and Economic Development, we looked, and I think that, I'm trying to remember from that study that there was some staffing needs that were suggested. I can't remember. I'm assuming when we look at the, the Fire Department staffing study, we'll see that there's some needs there. You know, you said there were two police officers that were suggested that weren't included. And you, it said earlier that that's, there's a lot of money investment when you hire staff and with pensions and all of that. But we know that we have some staffing needs and that that will be in our future. So I'm just curious, like, what are we doing to plan for that? Because what I'm not really seeing in this budget, I'm like seeing, and I know this is more of our strategic action plan, but what we're trying to get done for this year, but I'm not, I'm just curious, what are we thinking five, 10 years down the road to like to increase funding sources?
Well, there aren't a lot of options for increasing funding sources. You can do an amusement tax, but that kind of just singles out a couple of businesses and wouldn't provide that much. One of the things that I didn't mention is we do have some applications in for dispensaries. So we could end up having revenue from that and.
And we've got a car dealership.
A car dealership.
We have opening next year. Part of what we've budgeted for in Community and Economic Development is a consultant that could assist with connecting us with a hotel developer. We think that we've got some areas where, for instance, down by Prairie Commons, knowing that there's going to be a casino right across the street from there. Granted, it has its own hotel that's incorporated in there, but I'm sure that between, you know, having a casino and all of the Chicago, the.
Bring in an outlet.
Discount outlet, that, that, you know, that's a high draw. So I really think that we're poised to have something happen there and that's a significant revenue increase too. So that's why I'm thinking that there's this gap that we have in order to realize some of those additional revenue sources. And we will put together, you know, prioritization of those positions as to when we think that we can add them.
Yeah, because they're not going away. I mean, I mean, as the city grows, we're just going to continue adding.
Right.
And so.
We've added road miles. We've added, you know, we're adding new streets that need to be plowed, need to be protected with fire and police, new utility accounts that we have to collect. So there, there's definitely no doubt that we need more staff and.
And I think if we can plan these things incrementally, there are, you know, other communities that, you know, they find themselves in the position of having to make like a leap in their property tax rates. And we don't want to do that. We want to have a plan. And each year, if we find ourselves having additional sales tax revenue that we didn't anticipate and we don't have to make as much of an increase as we had planned, well, great. But I think that we should have a plan.
And as the EAV goes up, if we keep the rate up instead of dropping the rate back as the EAV went up, we'd be able to increase that intake, the revenue source, without having to lower the rate.
Exactly.
And that's something that I think we have to think about because for several years we backed off on the rate and let the EAV make it up. Where if we keep the rate up and take the EAV jump, then we're essentially getting more revenue without raising the rate. So that's the thing to me, I think we have to think about that as we move forward because that will allow us to add the staff, you know, and, and keep the revenue going upwards without having to constantly go in and publish a rate increase that gets us to the point where we can make that money.
And Allen, in what you just said, right now on the west side of Batavia, we got two subdivisions under construction that will add over 300 new houses.
Yeah.
And they're not cheap houses, you know. Polte's building both of them and they're probably starting at 350 and going to 450 or 500 real quick as you, as you negotiate with them and.
If you look at the prices of what's sold out there already, it's easily 100,000 more than what they started at on almost everyone that's out there.
I don't think they've had any problems with selling the houses.
Mark?
We actually have, like the EAV in the last, we, we have kept the rate the same so that we did in the last couple of years and surprised Peggy when I said that I was okay with that. The, it is a significant jump. I know you say, it, it isn't, it isn't. It's almost a 10% jump. So people are going, that's going to cause conversation, even though the number is relatively small per household. So I'm concerned about that a little bit. I guess one of the things, I look at 175 million dollars of capital projects over the next five years. And I wonder too, a couple of things that maybe we take a look at internally, are we too aggressive with our strategic plan that maybe we need to stretch the time on our strategic plan so we're not trying to force all this in in the next five years? Do we also look at what, I need a projection to know what we expect if conservatively and, you know, with like best case scenario, what we would expect from Tesla and all these extra houses over the next few years, what is that going to do to our revenue? Because that is the revenue increases, is those things. To understand what we're really looking at over the next five years. Because otherwise, you know, we could say, okay, 10% this year. Oh, shoot, 10% next year. Oh, shoot, 10% the year after. And all of a sudden, we're getting out of hand really quickly because we're not really thinking about five years out. We're thinking one year at a time and not doing any projections to see, is it even sustainable to do everything that we want? We have some of these, some of the.
That's a good question.
Some of the capital stuff is a wish list. I mean, I'll, I'll admit, the, the whitewater is a wish list. I think it's an investment that will have a benefit, but, you know, we really need to look at everything. And I just, I, it's hard to, to make a decision on one year when I don't know, have any idea what the four years after that are going to look like, especially looking at that 175 million.
We do, I do have some projections I just didn't include it in here. There's a lot of ifs, so I can give you a projection.
I'd like to see it. Is it a range or?
No, I just, I have all of the revenues and all of the expenses and where I know it's going to change.
And do you have projections on the, like, what our increases will be in sales tax from Tesla and housing if it, just assume every house was?
Yes.
500,000.
Right.
Which would be a low number, that'd be a conservative number because it'll probably end up being 600 and plus in Ashton Ridge, so.
Yes. And the other thing that plays a part is our pensions. Our police pension is 68% of payroll, which is significant. And then fire is 37% of payroll and our IMRF is right now 8.7. So those play a part as we have more retirees. We have had a lot of retirements in the police department. And this sounds so terrible, people are living longer, so it's costing more.
Reality.
We're healthier now.
That's reality.
And that plays a part too. So you have to put more into your pension funds to cover that. So those are part of it. You know, we tried to plan for capital. There's always something unexpected that pops up. Happened in the water department this year with something when they uncovered something and realized that some pipes were very corroded. So that had to be put into the plan that had not been in there last year. So that's something, you know, we can, we are definitely, the gap is going like this, not like this.
The, the last point on that though was I, I, we've had this discussion every year that I've been here, is that the reserve fund, we're better off than we were several years ago.
We are. We also got.
Because we've always.
$5 million from the federal government.
We may not have spent all the money that we're spending out. We, we got the money, we spent it.
Right. We were able to do improvements.
Definitely.
Yeah.
But it's always been, it's, it's, the hardest part about it is that I would, I don't know if there's been a year that we've spent every money. And you talk about this, Laura, that, you know, life interrupts and so we've, we always have this moment when it's like, oh, we got to take all this out of reserves and then, oh, we rarely if ever do it. Or it's a small amount that we end up doing and then we end up, okay, hey, that was a good year. And so it, but that's why I'd like to see more of that, what do you really expect for the next five years? And I'd like to see a range because then it makes it a little easier to make decisions. But if you just have.
Right. One of the other things that I didn't talk about much, I, I did say, please look at the IT budget. But the reason I say that is because one of the things that is going to keep costing more and more and more is technology. Everything is going to the cloud and that costs way more than keeping it here on site. And we're needing more programs so that employees can be more efficient and that makes sense, but there's also a cost to it that we're, we're needing to make some investments in that area too.
The other thing I wanted to say about, I, I understand what you mean about, since I've been here, it seems like it's, you know, around between 700, 1.2 million, whatever. I really feel like we're sort of at an inflection right now where this year, 500,000 on a 36 million dollar general fund budget, that isn't a lot to have left on the table this year. And I, that's why I feel like now is the time to start making this incremental increase on the property tax side. And we see that there are some revenue sources that will be coming online that we don't have today, that we anticipate a dispensary or two dispensaries, a car dealership, will we have a hotel? a car dealership, will we have a hotel, other retail opportunities on Randall Road that aren't quite fully baked yet, but seem like they're really going to make a significant contribution to those things.
One thing, though, that is for sure, because we're heavily reliant on the people, we're always going to have salary increases. And it would be unusual if we had sales taxes and income taxes that filled that gap completely. It just, it isn't realistic to think that our sales could increase that much to cover, you know, over five years, the increases for the cost of salary, training, and software.
My point was not that to try and keep it flat for five years. My point was to-
How much? Right.
I'm not gonna be around anymore, but I want everybody that is gonna be around to know that, oh, hey, this is, this is what you're voting on. If you do it, if you don't do it here, then you're gonna do it in three years, and in three years, it's gonna be 30% or whatever. But there needs to be transparency to it so that we're making good decisions now and next year and the year after that. Austin?
Chart. If you go to fund summaries for all funds, this is just as, like, a comparative example at the very top. Yeah. So, at the very top, this chart, could we get a similar chart to this for capital improvements, what was proposed versus what was spent over the last couple of years? Because that gets a little buried in the data. I know that we didn't spend as much on capital improvement as we expected to, if I recall, last, this past year.
Right. No, we didn't. Here, let me go down to the capital one. That is definitely one that there is a gap on. We had budgeted 56 million, and we're gonna, we're projecting to spend 49 million. A lot of that are projects in the TIF that we have budgeted for potential projects, and they don't happen. So, then we are under. And when we're talking about the revenue property tax, that's just the general fund. And usually, we don't have very much capital in the general fund as compared to the utilities.
If I could jump in on the capital, too. It's a little apples and oranges to compare capital on a year-by-year basis, because large projects, and I'll bring up, like, Main Street, you know, it just suddenly gets delayed because IDOT has us going in a different direction. So, it's better to look at capital more on a longer scale, like maybe five-year blocks, to say, over these five years, we had projected this much, and this is what we actually completed. If you do it on a year-by-year basis, it's a little skewed with capital, because projects can get delayed for reasons beyond our control. And so, it looks like we're not spending the money, like the road diet's a perfect example. But in reality, the projects are still going forward. It's just there's other forces out there that are causing them to be delayed.
And there is no shortage of capital projects that need to be done. All of our roads were put in in the 80s and 90s, and we want to get to them as, you know, as early as we can so that we can avoid them going into reconstruction, because it's very expensive when you get to that point. So, we've been putting extra money in, transfers from the general fund to the Street Improvement Fund to provide for resurfacing and the cracked ceiling and all of those programs. And in addition to those annual programs, we've been doing the reconstruction projects. Both of the projects on Prairie Street and Main Street, the first half, and then the second half is coming up. So, and I'm sure that there are some other big reconstruction projects coming up as well that we'll need. Yeah. So, when we're talking about a property tax increase, though, we are looking at the general fund projects. So, let's see where we were for the budget to actual, so, when we're looking at that chart, too, I don't have the ability to change the chart. So, this chart shows you budgeted 24 to 25. And then down here, when I show percentages for the change, that's projected. Because really, the projected change is where we, what we actually plan on spending for the year. So, when you see those percentages for the increases, that's to the projected spending, not to the budget. And one other thing that's a shortcoming of the software, I can't put budget amendments in here. So, if we make an amendment during the year, I can't get it into that number. I've asked for them to make that change, but they're expanding quite, quite a lot, and it's low priority for them. It's not a significant thing for us, but I just like it to be accurate. The accountant in me.
One other thing I'd like to bring up tonight with the, you know, to raise the tax rate and go to $67 a year, we have to remember that that 10%, or almost 10% raise in it is only 10% of the tax bill. 10% part of 10% of the overall tax bill.
Yeah.
So, that's something that I think we have to keep in mind as we think about how big of a change this is, or how small of it. Not to minimize it, but to put it in perspective. So, you know, when somebody sees this, if this was a 10% change at the school district level, it would be a much greater thing for people to absorb in a year than it is at our level.
I want to point out, though, it's not 10%.
Right.
It's much higher. So, the truth in taxation notice, overall, it's 21.49 because it includes the EAV growth.
Okay.
So, it's a shocking percentage, but when you put it on a per-house basis, it is not that much, because we had so much EAV growth with new developments. Because we just have to take, this is what we levied last year, this is what we're levying this year. What's the first?
I'm just trying to make it an easier way to-
I know, but I want to be forthright with you, because I want to make sure you see it.
The $5 and whatever it was.
It is. $5.60 a month, though.
Sorry, but one less coffee.
I was thinking that, too. But mocha is very good.
Explain that to me real quick. I'm gonna be the idiot for a quick second. When I'm looking at that 21.49% increase, that's what we're taking in, not necessarily what each property owner's gonna be paying more.
It's just the total levy.
Right.
This year, or the projected levy.
Not what the rate were. I understand.
Right. That's not the rate. The rate would, the way we have it in the budget, the rate would go from almost 73 cents to almost 80 cents.
I got a calculator. I can figure that out.
Yeah, that's the 10%. But then, when your house goes up by 10%.
Yeah, I'm still paying, right, and paying more, because they're building $600,000 homes next to me. Yeah.
I believe me, I don't suggest raising property taxes lightly.
I don't know. I'm like that.
I understand. It's hard for people. And when we know that we have 3% water rate increases and 8% sewer rate increases, and likely an increase for the electric utility once the study is done.
Yeah. And can you tell me just a little bit more about what we're thinking of that electric rate increase? Why do we believe that's gonna come, but we can't sort of say that now?
Well, we haven't raised the rate since 2015, and we've had a lot of cost increases in that same timeframe. But for the operations, but our power prices have gone up and down and up and down, which are why we were, have been able to weather no rate increases. But I think there's definitely some longer-term concerns on where electric rates are going and electric costs are going. Changing over to electric has a cost associated with it that could cause supply and demand issues, delivery and transmission issues. Gary actually is quite an expert on that and probably-
You're doing great.
Probably could comment on it better than I could.
And we believe these changes are coming this year as opposed to last year or next year.
Yeah. In 2025, we'll be doing a resiliency study to build upon the University of Chicago, the best study we had previously done. We're also doing a cost of service slash rate design study to kind of really address the rate issue as well as resource planning. So, all of those are gonna be done in 2025 to, really, 2025 is gonna be a planning year so that we know going into the future years where the electric is headed. So, think of it as strategic planning for the electric utility this year.
Maybe an increase this year.
We don't have anything increasing in 2025 right now, but based on when the study gets done, we may come later in the year and say, this is what the recommendations are, and, and put that before you. It's not a given. I don't know how long they could have, it could take them longer to complete the study than we think. We have the information ready to provide them, so it could go quickly. But assessing the condition of the assets, which I think is gonna be part of it, could take longer.
If we can make it past May, that'll be 10 years without a rate increase.
Pretty good record.
How does that compare to ComEd? Because you hear the argument from people all the time, oh, Batavia Electric is so expensive. Is it now?
Not anymore.
Not anymore. We hit the great crossover.
It certainly was at one point in time.
It was. Yes, for many years, but over the last couple of years.
Part of that is sieges caused ComEd's rates to skyrocket over the last couple of years.
Yeah.
They've gone up considerably. As a ComEd customer, I can attest.
I'm also a ComEd customer, because I'm just outside the city limits, and, and the rates have gone up significantly. Costs are higher for everything, unfortunately. Construction costs, material costs, labor costs, benefit costs.
The capital projects will get any lower cost? None of them. I don't see that.
No. And I am all for stretching out capital projects. Gary and I, every year, can't you wait two more years? Can't you wait three more years? One more year would really make an improvement. And, right? And we have those conversations. It's gonna cost more in two years and those kinds of things. So, we really do look at it and try to make the best decisions for the community and time those capital projects as best as possible. I will provide you, though, with that projection over the five years for the general fund.
And as always, if anybody has questions, please email them directly to Peggy, copy me. Peggy then takes your questions and gives them back to everyone and posts them and the answers.
And I've got feedback over the past, like, two years of people that try to follow the budget stuff online and watch those and read those questions and read the answers, because they feel like that keeps them involved in it, and it's real easy to find that, especially with what we've got now. It's so much easier to go through the budget, you know. You guys wouldn't have believed what it was like in 2003 when we started this, or when I started this, and how crazy it was to sit down here for two months and go through line by line to start with. That was my, that was my first budget experience, was line by line with Norm Pegman. Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Government services.
I've been here since 2001. So, 2002 was my first budget.
Yeah. Those were interesting meetings.
Seen a lot of changes over the years, but changes for the good.
Yeah. It's much easier to-
I think there's a lot more transparency that we're able to provide the community with this software. We heard about it right away, two years ago, when we implemented this software. In particular, from, you know, some residents who are, have been, you know, involved in many issues over the years, said, this is light years ahead of what there was before. And it wasn't that they didn't feel like we were, they didn't feel like we were not being transparent. It's just that this helps them so much see it in a more organized fashion. They can get to specifically the information they're looking for, whereas before, they'd have to contact Peggy or contact me and say, can you tell me where in the budget? I can find X. So, this has been really helpful. And for staff, too. I think it's been a really good tool for us to build our budgets this year. They, what we were, I think, waiting for in the update that they made was they added a lot of enhanced collaboration tools. Used to be that the department heads had to wait until all the numbers got rolled up before they could look at it, before they approved it, and then sent it on to Peggy. And now, they can see the budgets in process.
Right. We were all able to see, you know, the individual departments were able to work on it together and see the changes. And I was able to see what they were working on. Whereas last year, I couldn't see anything until they submitted it. So, it was a big improvement for that.
Okay.
If you think of anything else that you would like for next Tuesday, you know, let me know.
All right. No other questions? I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Motion by his folks.
Thank you.
Second by Malay. All those in favor?